I'll call the meeting to order and ask for the roll call.
Commissioner Leibler?
Here.
Commissioner Witten?
Here.
Commissioner Quinlan?
Present.
Chair Christensen?
Here.
Commissioner Lang?
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes January 23rd.
Night shift minutes, night shift meeting.
And would you then give us a motion?
I'm motioning to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
I abstained.
Nice of you.
That wasn't theirs.
Yes. This time, part of the meeting is for any comments by the public or items that are not on the agenda. And with a time limit of speaking of three men or a person. Do we have anybody that wants to speak? On any issue that has been voted on or on the agenda? Don't. Commissioners' reports?
Not anything going. Nothing to me.
Nothing to me either.
Nothing to me.
Busy commission. The staff, unfortunately.
Thank you. The little league item was tentatively scheduled for your March meeting, and they need a little more time to finalize the plans. So we've set that for the April 27th meeting. Also, I think I updated you previously that we're working on with our consultant, the environmental impact report for the carton field at Menlo School and Menlo College. And we'll go ahead and send you a copy of those preliminary plans with a summary memo, just so you can see what the project looks like at this stage. It may shift a little bit as they work out some of the concerns the neighbors have. So we'll send that to you. If you have any questions, you can direct those to Neil Martin, who's working with the school on the project. And that's all I have for today. Thanks. Thank you.
Any questions, staff?
Yeah, I just have a quick question, just put on our radar screen. I had read about this Facebook plan for a second campus. And one of the things that I just wanted to make sure that we're conscious of is sometimes that can affect our traffic, either down March or other way.
It may, but that was negotiated away in the first Facebook go-around. And so, Facebook has a pass.
Okay, alright.
So, we're not going to be bothered with their EIR or their traffic or anything else, because we've already settled with them for both campuses.
Good, alright, thanks.
New business. Number six on the agenda is the Sacred Heart master plan update. I'll excuse myself, as I live within 150, I mean 500 feet of the campus. So, Phil, will you please take over? Oh, yeah, one, six and seven, yeah.
Okay, I'll note the recues from the next one as well. Thank you. The item before you is the annual master plan update from Sacred Heart School. And as you know, the code likes to see these updates annually from the schools. Talk about what their intended uses are, as well as their enrollment on an annual basis. So your action tonight would be just to simply receive the report. You're not doing it. And at this point, I'd like to have Sandy Dubinsky from Sacred Heart Schools provide an overview of the master plan.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Dubinsky. I'm representing Sacred Heart Schools at 150 Valparaiso Avenue. As you may have seen in the update this year, we really have no changes to the master plan. Last year, there was a change when we introduced the, on here it's called the basketball pavilion, but we're now referring to it as the practice gym, which is, I think, the next slide of new business. What we've accomplished since the last master plan, we finally finished our new lower and middle school. That was in plans for us for seven years, and we're very happy to have that complete. We've also, as part of that plan, we added the new parking lot with an entrance and an exit onto Park Lane. And then we completed bleachers along the Emily side of the football field. And I'm elected to put that in. It was one of those projects that I was so happy when it was complete, I tried to forget about it. So, they're the things that we did. And the basketball pavilion or the practice gym is the only change. And that was introduced last year. Any questions?
Yeah, I'd like to comment that I see that this is what's actually happening at Sacred Heart right now. I'd like to see you present something that was a look ahead, like three to five years ahead. One of the things when I was out there and we talked, there was some older buildings that you were saying would probably need to be replaced in the fairly near future. But I really feel that, not that you would be, you know, Sacred Heart would be obligated to complete every project that would be a look-ahead project, but to have some idea about where we're going with the campus.
Okay, because in the EIR, that was done prior to our starting the lower and middle school. The other building that's up there that is marked for replacement is the McGannity Gym. That's one of the older buildings. And then when you had asked me that question, I said the only other building left on campus that is one of our older buildings is the Seagull Building. Now, we did a substantial renovation to that when we completed the Homer, the Michael J. Homer Science Building. So, we're, I don't know that three to five years is, you know, even a plan to replace that. But my guess, and Mr. Dioli is here, who is the head of our school, he may have a vision for even further out than that. But for the next three to five years, I would say McGannity is probably the project.
So this plan would hold up for that period of time, you think?
I think, yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey Sandy, I've got a question about a rule. Right now, your enrollment is somewhere between around 11:55, is it 11:40, somewhere in there?
Yes, I have 11:34, yeah, correct.
Somewhere in there.
Yes.
Theoretically, you can go up to 11:96.
That is correct.
That's pretty tempting to add extra students and revenue to the campus. Is there any plans to move that up a little bit in the future, enrollment?
The 11:96?
No, to up to 11:96.
I think what I've given you here, this chart that I'm showing, 2012 to 2017, is as accurate as we can give. So that shows, oh, in 2015, 16, 2016, 17, we're estimating 11:56.
So that is a good number.
I think so, yes.
The other question I had was, in the first page of the update, it says Sacred Heart Schools continues to work with Menlo School regarding the traffic mitigation plan for Valparaiso, Emily and Valparaiso, Atlanta.
Correct. It's coming up slowly. We are, we have our plans, and we have submitted them to the town. And there is still discussion, though, because of the number of trees that are going to be impacted. It looks as if 19 trees will have to come down.
How many?
19. And quite a few of them are heritage.
That would be most likely on?
It's actually, it's probably more Emily than it is Elena, but it's actually on both sides. So, you know, we've been trying to figure out if there is an alternate to that.
Do you have any proposed timetable on when those improvements might really occur?
Well, we're still striving to do it by August of 2013.
So the design is complete?
The design is complete.
Alright, no further questions, Brian, anybody else?
Go.
Thank you, Sandy.
Sorry.
I'm motioning to approve the?
Hi, good. This is not technically a public hearing, but we did notice it. So you may want to ask if there's any room from the public.
Anyone else in the audience like to speak on this subject? Being none now. About a motion to approve for filing the master plan update of February 2013. So motion along that line?
I move that the finding commission accept for filing 2013 annual master plan update from Sacred Heart Schools.
I'll say.
All in favor, say aye.
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 To approve for filing. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Conditional use permit 150 of Valparaiso. Conditional use permit and mitigated negative declaration for construction of 12,000 square foot practice gym at Sacred Heart Schools. As in municipal clause section 17.12 and 17.36.
Thank you, thank you. The item before you is indicated is the conditional use permit for the new practice gym at Sacred Heart. And we've also prepared a mitigated negative declaration. And after you receive the presentation, your next action would be to discuss the environmental document before you consider the conditional use permit. So you should take those options in that order. The request is for a conditional use permit for a new practice gym. And that building is approximately 12,000 square feet in area, with a height of about 33 feet. And it would be in the same location as the current outdoor basketball courts on the property. There are some modifications to the site that need to occur, including some relocate, some modifications to the detention basin, as well as some of the access to the property for the emergency egress. As noted, this does not increase any of the activities on the site. It just provides a building for the activities that are currently occurring there. Doesn't cause any increase in traffic or enrollment, with the exception of the period during construction. So now I'll have Katrina review the mitigated negative declaration, and she can answer any of your questions relating to that document.
Hi, my name's Katrina Hart-Holick. I'm with URS. And our firm prepared the mitigated negative declaration for the Sacred Heart Schools' practice gym. In 2010, a program EIR was prepared for the master plan that did not include the practice gym in this location. Under CEQA, when you prepare a program EIR, you can, later actions that come up, you can prepare an initial study to examine whether the change in the project, which is the change in the master plan, would result in any significant new impacts or changes that require mitigation measures that weren't included in the document. So, we looked at the practice gym, the detention basin, and the fire access pad in light of all the impacts that were analyzed in the EIR, the program EIR. And there's no new impacts, no substantially severe new impacts. There's no need for any new mitigation measures. So all the analysis that was prepared for the master plan in 2010, all those mitigation measures are, hold for this change in the project, which is just really a minor change, minor addition of square footage. So, the mitigated negative declaration just brings, readopts the mitigation measures that the project would have to comply with, and just ensures that the town's, you know, adopting a project certifying that there won't be a new impact that you would need to worry about.
Any questions, Commissioner?
No.
Mayor Beattie?
No.
Paul?
Need for a comment?
Nope.
Need for a question, please, Commissioner, on anything, at this point?
Not, here?
If not, we'll open the public hearing. I guess we don't have to do that, do we?
Yes, sure, yes.
Mitigated negative declaration. Anyone in the audience have any comments on the mitigated declaration? Apparently, there's been nothing in writing submitted. That's correct.
We received no public comments on the project, correct?
Anyone in the audience? If not, we close the public hearing. Then, my comments on the draft mitigated negative declaration, I think is very well done. Anyone else?
You may continue leaving now, because it invites me.
I don't get nice words out of you.
So, in motion?
In motion.
Alright, I'll move that the finding commission certify the Sacred Heart Schools' practice gym project subsequent to the initial, this is the one I'm doing?
Just the environmental.
Alright, then we move to accept the mitigated negative declaration is complete, adequate, and complies with the California Environmental Quality Act.
Do not prevent them.
That's it. I was not going to, but that works out for me.
I'll second it.
In open second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The draft initial study mitigated declaration is passed and will be filed properly. The next item on our agenda is another public hearing. And this is for the conditional use permit itself for the practice gym.
Oh, I don't have any to add to your point. So if you want to have Sandy Dubinsky maybe can walk you through the plan.
Very good. Sandy, again?
Well, thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about this. And thank you to those of you who were able to join me for a tour, so you could see exactly where we're proposing to build this new facility. I've put up here a rendering, a computer rendering, of what the facility will likely look like. To get your bearings, this is the Homer Center. And this is where our existing basketball courts are right now, the exterior basketball courts. This facility, as I said, is about 12,000 square feet. It will resemble, in color in particular, the Homer Center, which would be sort of the dark burgundy and then stuck up. The building itself is mainly requested because of the way our athletic programs have increased, especially basketball and volleyball. Our students are ending up staying at school until almost 10 o'clock for practice. And we think that that's a little bit late. The other issue is that because of the number of teams and sort of who gets the priority in practicing, the JV or the freshman team practice less. And since they don't drive, their parents are coming now to pick them up, take them home, bring them back for practice. Maybe they wait, maybe they don't. So they go home, then they come back, pick up the kids and go home. So, we believe that if we can build this, and we can get our practices to just be at the end of school, we can eliminate, we estimated about 30 round trips for families to come, you know, to and from the campus. So there's, you know, we felt that that was a good thing. The other is also getting the students out of there at a much more reasonable time. Practices begin at 3:30. But as I said, some of these kids were going home and then coming back at 7:30 or 8:00 to start their practice. The other, I believe I put in here that some of the other use for this facility would be to have some, as we call them, some community functions, which mainly our community. We help hold an auction, we hold a fashion show, and right now, we have it on the adjoining field. And so, we put a tent up here. And so, the proximity of this new facility would serve as a pre-function space that could also be used. And also would serve as a meeting place, you know, for the school, for other events. None of these items are new. It's just a place to hold things that we've already had happening on the campus. The idea is to start construction, we hope, by the end of the school year, late April, early May. And the initial plan right now is to have it complete by the end of November. The basketball season begins, I think, November 1st, but I don't know that we'll make that date. So that's, that's pretty much the description of the project.
Any questions?
No questions?
I have, I have one. The neighbors that are along this street who are sort of most impacted by potentially seeing the building rather than through the flapping cords, have you talked to them about things?
We held a neighborhood meeting, and no one showed.
Okay. That's all you can do.
It's a good setback.
Yeah, yes. For those of you who visited, it is set back quite a bit. And there's also the tree line. We have trees here, second row of trees here. And there will be trees, now, we are taking out trees in this, in the footprint, and we will replant, you know, those trees, replant those. We will mitigate those removals with planting.
No, I appreciate the tour, and a good call card, bragging by the way. And I just please be aware of during the tour itself. Thank you.
Sandy, I've got a question on the third page of the presentation, the new presentation. Campus access and staging for the project, staging for the project to take place in the Atlanta parking lot. When schools own the Atlanta parking lot, it's pretty full. What are you going to do with extra parking?
So right now, our juniors park, we probably have about 20 spots available on the Elena lot. They're obviously the last 20, because they're not popular. When, and we have been talking about the staging here and where the construction workers will park. Since, you know, again, this starts in April or May, that's when we actually start seeing the seniors start disappearing. They have their APs and then their 3. And they have graduation memorial day weekend. So then the parking is, will be open quite a bit. Summertime, I don't anticipate a problem. With the new parking lot over here, if we need to, we can move even some of our faculty and staff to park over in the new parking lot, because that is not full every day. That has 78 spots. And right now, we're able to put our middle school teachers here, our lower school teachers here, our preschool teachers here. So we do have enough parking that if we need to move faculty, we can. We also have worked very closely with the circus club. And they've been very kind, allowing us to park in their corner lot. So, that would be our plan, to move the adults, and then the students would still have the parking.
Well, Circus Club has lots of events across the summertime. And many times, there are people who are attending the Circus Club events parked all over Park Lane. How's that going to affect your parking, or vice versa?
Well, during the summertime, it shouldn't affect us.
Well, with their events.
You mean on, during the school year?
No, during the summer, when Circus Club has their major events, the parking is all over the place.
Oh, for the horse show in particular, yes. Well, we'll, we will give them parking in the areas where we get it. I mean, we've, that's been sort of a reciprocal program that we have. We've allowed them to park the horse trailers all along this corner at Elena and Valparaiso. We'll still be able to do that. And we may be able to get some of their parking up here. I don't think I can accommodate as many as they've had in the past, so.
Any further questions? But the net of that whole discussion is that you don't anticipate an additional parking issue, off-campus parking issue at all, is that?
When school, when the students come back?
Yes.
I think we're gonna, I think we'll have a challenge, and I think we will have to address it. And it may be that we have to move?
But it'll all be on your campus.
Ideal, that would be the ideal. I know that, you know, people have said, well, how can your students park out on the park? I said, well, the truth is, Park Lane is public parking. And if our students park, we tell them they may only park on our side, not on the Circus Club side. And if they're not parked appropriately, I probably shouldn't say this out loud, but I've called the police on them, because if I can't get them to move, I'm happy to have the police come and ticket them.
Questions?
It's your time.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
It is a public hearing. I've heard comments from commissioners. I'll open the public hearing for the conditional use permit application to the practice gym. Anyone in the audience want to speak on the subject? Not to close the public hearing, but to close.
I'll say something.
Oh, sure.
Rose Howe, fifth queen of Val. I just want to say that I'm in support of this project. I think it's a good thing, it's a good thing for Sacred Heart, for all the reasons that Sandy's explained, the practice, cycling, and, you know, keeping the kids on campus, their safety, and getting anybody on board. And it has, it seems like negligible impact on the town and the residents, as the EIR has suggested. So, you know, with that in mind, I think that it provides year-round practice. You know, there seem to be no downside. Sandy's thought about all the parking issues related to construction. And again, there's no increase in student population, there's no increase in traffic as a result of this gym. And Sacred Heart has had a history, I think has a history, of just working well with the town. And I think that with that history, this project would be no exception. I think that anything happens, they will work with the town. And they have a history of being good neighbors too, as we would say.
Thank you, Rose. Anyone else, please? If not, we close the public hearing. Comments by commissioners? Eric?
I would just say, I phrase "good neighbor" because I think that the whole approach on this has been a good neighbor approach, in terms of making sure people are included in the process, and making sure that we had a tour to see what was going on, so I appreciate that. I didn't see anything, it's not my preferred location for the building itself, but I understand why it is there, because of the pipes, the gas pipes, or water pipes, whatever they are, in the area that made for the angle of the building. And I don't think it'll change the use of the site in a way that is going to generate more traffic. And I think it will be a more functional place for the designated purpose that you have on the site, on the campus. So I liked all those things about it. I didn't see any reason from a planning perspective that would be issued stuff for us.
Paul?
I agree. And it sounds like they've crossed the Ts and dotted the Is and thought their way through the stuff. And the neighbors obviously aren't concerned about it. And neighbors aren't concerned about it, then I'm not sure why we should be concerned about it if everything else is settled, so it's a good idea.
Very good. Paul, Mayor Beattie?
I have nothing else to add.
I took the tour on Thursday, and the lighting and seating property improved, as it always has been improved overall. I would be in favor of the conditional use permit. Motion, please?
Alright, okay, I thought that was motion, but I'll, alright, I'll go ahead and I move that the finding commission make the findings and recommend the staff report and approve the conditional use permit for the Sacred Heart Schools' practice gym project with the condition stated, the draft conditional use permits. Correct?
Second, Paul? Thank you. To approve the conditional use permit for the practice gym, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Paul? Motion to carry. Thank you. And we'll welcome our chairman back. Thank you, Sandy.
You're running, you're running a very efficient meeting.
Let's tell him that we approved the parking on his lot.
Construction staging is going to work around.
Thank you for coming. Pleasure to be out there.
Thank you, Charlie.
Item number eight is the next item, which deals with Ninety-two Southern Line. This is a continuation of earlier meeting, and we first hear from staff.
Thank you. Good evening. This item before you tonight is a request for two special structure permits and a heritage tree removal permit to allow for the removal of two trees at Ninety-two Southern Drive. This item was heard on December fifth and continued from January twenty-third, and since that time, the applicant has made changes to the tennis court proposal in order to address neighbor concerns. In addition, the applicant has clarified various items for the commission's request, which have been outlined in the staff support. Specifically, the tennis court has been rotated away from the neighboring property at Fifty Bell Brook, which results in the removal of one of the previous retaining walls and the creation of steps at grade to access the court. As part of the agreement with the neighbors, the applicant is proposing a nine-foot sound wall, which will reduce noise coming from the court. A sound study was conducted, and although the study found that the court would meet town noise requirements without the sound wall, the applicants are proposing this wall to alleviate the neighbors' concerns. Landscaping to screen the wall would be required, and the applicants are proposing planting an escrine of English Laurel along the wall. And we also received, since you, since you received the report, the approximate amounts of cut and fill for the project. The cut would be approximately one thousand five hundred and fifty cubic yards and approximately five hundred cubic yards of fill. The neighbors have indicated that they would not oppose the project if the tennis court is in the new location and is constructed with a sound wall and landscaping. In addition, no lighting will be allowed to illuminate the court. Staff is supportive of this proposal. As you recall, the applicant is also requesting permission to construct a carport less than a hundred and twenty feet from the front property line at eighty-seven feet. There is a redwood tree in the vicinity, which the town arborist has recommended moving further away from the carport if possible. Since the tree is relatively young, the arborist feels that it will continue thriving after relocation. In addition, the applicants are requesting approval for the removal of the two oak trees, both of which staff support. I'm available for any questions, as is the town arborist and architect. Thank you.
One question. I did visit the sites, saw the new location of the tennis courts. I'm a little puzzled, though, are we still asking for two walls closer than twenty feet to each other?
We took a conservative approach to this. There is a portion of the end of one of the retaining walls is less than twenty feet from the beginning of another wall where the stairs cut through.
Okay, that's the law you're applying.
Yeah, the original proposal did have another wall that was closer than twenty feet, but due to the process that they've gone through to come to form, the issues with the tennis court, we've opted proven to be more conservative with that.
Are there any other questions, staff?
Yeah, I have a question, Andrea. You use the word, the addition of the sound wall. Can we interpret that to mean a sound wall with an acoustic liner on the inside, you mean acoustic wall?
Exactly, correct.
Well, somewhere, I gotta clarify, I want to make sure that that's done.
And I think the applicant mentioned there were a couple of different types of lining they could do. I'm not sure if they've chosen one yet, but maybe they could speak to that when they come in.
Any other questions? Was the applicant scared to make a statement?
Good evening, Bob Swatton, architect. First of all, thank you, commissioners, for coming out to see the site, to tour it, and shuffle down the hill and back again. We really appreciate that. We have brought three boards. I don't know how useful they will be for you, because I think most of the exhibits are in front of you. But we do have a site plan that shows the rotated configuration of the tennis court. We have a blow-up, more detailed plan of the court that shows all the additional landscaping. And then we do have an elevation, which you probably have not seen, and that is the elevation of the downside wall viewed from the neighbor's property. I would like to show you that. In fact, I patted one through all three of those very quickly. This, this board is the site plan, the entire site, and the only change, there's been no change proposed at the carport. I don't know if you can see this.
Okay, I've just been suggested that you use, put it up against the whiteboards and the audience can see also.
I can do that. The only serious change in the proposal is the rotation of the court, about five degrees to something between five and ten degrees, which allowed for increasing the space between the court and the navy, and the property line. Now varies from about ten feet to eighteen feet, instead of being ten feet all the way across, gave us a much larger landscape buffer area, and allowed us to create one simple wall around the court and not have to terrace it up the hill. And so we have one simple wall, and the only place where we have two walls that are closer than twenty is where we had to stop the wall to enter the court. Okay, this is the larger...
I'm sorry, would you point that out?
Yes. One wall ends right here, the other wall ends right here, well, and extends right back into here. This allows you to enter the court.
Well, of course.
And that's, that's a technicality.
Yes, it is a technicality.
Yes, yes, it's something. There, this is the additional landscaping, including this line of English Laurel, which actually will grow higher than the court, the sound wall, acoustical wall, and can be trimmed as a hedge, you know, that will cover the wall completely. So we do have one more board to show you. And the landscaping that's shown on this board, this is the wall facing the neighbor's property. The landscaping that we're showing, all of this landscaping is just for screening. What it's not showing is that there are trees this high all over the property. You've seen the property. There are lots and lots of trees, hard to find a place to plant more trees. But the English Laurel hedge is shown here, topped off right...